The school committee business session of November 10, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member DeZoglio. Member Donovan.
Present.
Member Keegan.
Present.
Member Maxwell.
Present.
Member Shabelia.
Here.
Member Willeth.
Yep.
Mayor Boragad.
Here. We need a motion and a second to accept the amended agenda for tonight's meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia. The second is from the vice chair. Any discussion?
I didn't get an amended agenda, I don't think.
It's not amended.
Oh, I spoke out of turn.
Okay.
Not amended agenda. Just a regular agenda.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. So we have the motion from Member Shabelia. The second is from the vice chair. Discussion? Not will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so our agenda has been accepted. Superintendent, I'll invite you to introduce our student for tonight's flag salute.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call up Cynthia Bennett. She's the lower school associate principal for the Marsh and our flag salute student tonight, Christopher Fielding, I believe, who also goes by CJ. So come on up. Thank you. Welcome. Good evening and thank you for allowing us to share one of our star students. I'm proud to present tonight's Marsh star student to lead the flag salute, Christopher J. Fielding, or CJ, to his family and friends. CJ exemplifies safety, respect, and responsibility. He strives to be the best he can be. In his words, he wants to be at the top. CJ is a role model for his peers and for his younger sister Haley in first grade. She loves playing soccer with him. CJ's teacher, Mrs. Whitcomb, reports that CJ is a model student with a true zest for learning. He sets personal academic goals for himself, accomplishing those goals, and continues to set new goals. He has already completed an extra math program showing mastery in all four operations. CJ loves history and can often be found reading books about historical events, as well as studying states, capitals, beyond what they're covering in the class so far. He continually makes connections to current events, as well as historical events, as they are learning in the classroom. CJ is dependable and responsible. Mrs. Whitcomb can count on him to support his friends. He takes responsibility for his academic work and for all of his actions. He's in charge of the fourth grade bag of recess equipment, making sure it goes out to recess and all the equipment is collected at the end of recess each day. At recess, CJ enjoys playing football, often cheered on by many, but also congratulating other students and supporting them when needed. CJ is respectful to all, whether at recess, in the classroom, and in the hallways. Outside of school, in addition to playing games with his family, he enjoys soccer and baseball. He has not decided yet if he would like to be a baseball player, a soccer player, or an eighth grade history teacher. Mom and dad are so proud of the young man CJ is becoming. We know that CJ will accomplish all of his goals and continue to be a role model to all who know him. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And briefly, before we take pictures, I'll ask that everybody remain standing for a moment to pause, to recognize the passing of a longtime Methuen educator, Eileen Hayes, who passed away on October 30, 2025. Ms. Hayes taught elementary school at Pleasant Valley School and Comprehensive Grammar School for over 40 years and will be deeply missed by her colleagues and many students, particularly those with whom she remained connected well into their adulthood. Ms. Hayes was a dedicated educator in the Methuen Public Schools and a beloved community member. Thank you. And now we'll take a picture. And now I'll invite the superintendent to introduce our SOAR award winners.
Yes, my pleasure. So if I could ask Meredith Moore, the math department chair, to come on up, and our SOAR award winner, Yasmin Britta. Oh, and happy birthday to Ms. Moore.
Thank you for putting me on the spot, Dr. Golovski. Good evening. The mathematics department proudly announces Yasmin Britta as this year's Mathematics SOAR Award recipient. When I shared the exciting news with Yasmin, she began to tell me about the many clubs, activities, academic achievements, and her independent interests outside of the mathematics classroom. To say I was impressed would be an understatement. Not only has Yasmin excelled in her AP Mathematics courses, but she is also an AP scholar with distinction, having earned either a four or five on the AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Computer Science, AP English Language and Composition, AP Physics, AP Precalculus, and AP Calculus BC exams. For her senior year, she is enrolled in AP Statistics, AP Economics, AP Literature and Composition, AP Environmental Science, and AP Spanish. Tonight, we celebrate a young woman who has not only excelled in all of her mathematics courses, but one who is involved, driven, curious, and passionate about supporting her community. Currently ranked third in the senior class, Yasmin showed early on in her freshman year that mathematics was a strength when she signed up to partake in the Math Olympiad statewide competition. She was not intimidated by the complexities of the questions, but was eager to learn how to work through these challenging problems. After the exam, Yasmin organized a group of students to meet after school to work through the competition problems. I recall Yasmin leading much of the discussion, willing to offer suggestions and sharing how she worked through some of the problems. She was intrigued by the different approaches one could take to get to the same result, and just as interested in the problem-solving approach of her peers. That curiosity and drive continues to carry Yasmin through high school and all of her mathematics classes. She took AP Precalculus and BC Calculus over the past two years, earning the highest score of a five on both exams. Mr. LaRocque, Yasmin's AP Precalculus teacher, describes her as a bold risk taker in the classroom. She was willing to make and learn from mistakes and persevere through any challenges that came her way. She constantly improved throughout the course of the year. Mr. Pagliaroni, Yasmin's BC Calculus teacher, was impressed with the way Yasmin consistently applied prior knowledge to support deeper understanding of new content. In group activities, she often took a leadership role, discussing content in depth with her classmates. Ms. Uraina, Yasmin's AP Statistics teacher, also praised Yasmin's leadership qualities, emphasizing her ability to support her classmates by explaining concepts in a different way. Yasmin's meticulous work and interest in pushing herself beyond what is expected leads me to believe a five on the AP Statistics exam is well within her reach. Outside the classroom, Yasmin continues to excel. She has successfully competed with teams in the state science fair, as well as in the Applied Learning Showcase through Project Lead the Way. Two years ago, Yasmin and her partners presented a project at the Applied Learning Showcase using computer vision to detect recyclable items, which won the award for most outstanding computer science project. Last year, Yasmin had the honor of working with graduate students from CU Boulder, am I right? Okay. To create Bear, the bilingual education assistant with recognition. This bear-shaped toy powered by computer vision has a built-in camera to detect day-to-day objects, pronounce, write, provide a definition, or use a word in a sentence. This project aimed to support English language learners in building vocabulary through challenges and digital rewards. Yasmin's involvement in her school and community is as impressive as her academic resume. Yasmin is the captain of the robotics team, president of the science club, senior officer for the Black Indigenous and People of Color Club, BIPOC, the president of the multicultural club, and the quinceañera emcee for the Spanish club. She also is a representative on several committees, which include the Computer Science Program Advisory Committee, the Arab Association for Culture and Art, and the Methuen World Language Advisory Team. And if that is not enough, Yasmin began her own initiative to teach Muslim students of all ages how to code. She secured funding to purchase 25 computers and conduct sessions throughout the Merrimack Valley teaching Python coding. And on top of all that, Yasmin still found time to work over the summer with the Methuen Technology Department to set up Chromebooks and iPads for incoming students. This year, Yasmin continues to work with the Technology Department through the CTE externship program focusing on website design, and is currently working with Dr. Aziz to create the website for the Methuen SAD program. Upon graduation, Yasmin will look to pursue a degree in computer science, specifically data science or AI engineering. She plans to stay local and is applying to Northeastern University of Massachusetts, Amherst, Wesley, and Boston University. Yasmin's curiosity, drive, perseverance, and dedication will no doubt lead her to success in whatever career she pursues. I look forward to seeing where her road takes her. Congratulations, Yasmin Britta, on our Mathematics SOAR Award recipient.
Thank you so much. I want to start off, of course, by thanking Mrs. Moore for honoring me with this award. Social justice, problem solving, things like that are very important to me, and I've always found like math is one of the few tools that can provide us with definitive solutions to some of the biggest problems that we have in our world. So this award is something that's very special to me because it just, it makes me feel very empowered to keep going and also just feel very encouraged in what I've done. So I want to say thank you again to Mrs. Moore. I also want to thank all of the math teachers that I've had here at MHS, Mr. Hunter, Mr. LaRocque, Mr. Pags, and Ms. Uraina, just for always encouraging me and just keeping such a positive and exciting environment in the classroom. I can specifically remember Mr. Hunter's catapult projects and Mrs. Uraina's career projects, which have just made math feel so like applicable. It just, I love how I've had some of the best memories in my math classes and met some of my best friends. So it's just been a great experience overall. And I'd also like to thank my family, especially my mom who's here with me today, my friends, and all of my other teachers who've just encouraged me to keep going and always work hard and do what I love. So thank you so much.
With that, I'll close the public participation portion of our meeting. If you cannot make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to Susan Shanti at s n s c i o n t i at methuen.k12 dot m a dot u s before 3:00 p.m. on the day of a school committee meeting. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October 14, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia. The second is from Member DeZoglio. Discussion? Not will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we're on to staff reports. On the agenda, we list superintendent and assistant superintendent update. We have none tonight. We'll move on to the Health and Safety Task Force and Maintenance and Custodial Updates. I know a memo was provided to the committee. Dr. Quong, not sure if you want to hop in there?
I'll take any questions. I tried to format it the same way we did the previous, especially with the visits, the monthly visits and the submissions for the pest sightings. I think as you can see there, we are definitely heading in the right direction with the pest sighting form. So this month has been quieter, which is good. The temperatures will pick up, right? So Darren and all of us are just watching, you know, closely and monitoring anything that is happening. A little uptick at the chimney, but it's actually in one particular location, so we're all aware of that. So it's very helpful to have those submissions so we can also inform the new pest management folks, which all of our seniors have access to. So we're watching that closely. And again, we're starting our next cycle of monthly visits with Darren, I believe, next week. So those will continue.
We'll hear from Member Maxwell and then Member DeZoglio.
Just a quick question. When it comes to the sightings, I know that we were saying that there's less sightings, but in this month alone, it looks like we've paid the new pest end company $7,800 for 11 visits. So I was just curious, if there's no need for them, how come we're making such a big payment to them?
I believe that was their setup.
Yeah, the majority of that would be the setup.
Okay.
The one-time setup fee.
Okay.
And then there's a, there was a small monthly maintenance fee, but that majority of that was set up, new boxes, new traps.
Okay, so it's not going to cost us that much every?
No, they've actually come to the schools twice, full view with the senior custodians twice this past month, for the full setup, to add boxes, to get a handle on any specific areas. So they have connections with each of the senior custodians at the So they have connections with each of the senior custodians at this point.
Member DeZoglio?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. The one questions I have is the process of the onboarding of the new building maintenance facility supervisor and custodial services supervisor. Is Bruce Stella going to be available to them when they get on? Because I know he only has like five weeks left. So when the transition of stuff hands over, are these people going to be prepared to take on that role? So just coming in and being said, this is kind of where you are, go for it type of, is Bruce Stella going to be available for them?
Our goal was to have them both on board by November 17th, so that they'd have a month to work with Bruce. Bruce has also said that he'll make himself available to come in per day or whenever we need him, should something happen. He has the, you know, the historical knowledge of the mechanical aspects of every building. So he will be available, whether it be by phone or to come in as we need it after that.
Thank you.
Member Donovan?
Dr. Quan, can you just give us an update on the carpeting and where we are?
So on the last page, there are three main projects that we're looking at for FY26. So the final piece for carpeting at the Timoney is actually, and I don't think I said that, I said carpet replacement, not Timoney. So that item is specifically for Timoney. The money's already earmarked for FY26. We just couldn't get the abatement plus the tile plus all the other rooms done. So the only rooms left at the Timoney are the rooms that do not need a maitman. So we actually are working on the RFP now so that we can see if they can get it done over the vacations.
Which would be great.
Which would be great. But by June 30th is when it has to be expended.
Okay.
And then there's on the RFP, I mean, on the capital improvement plan for FY27, we had already earmarked carpet projects. So I think that's going to just take a little strategy because we do need to have a building open for the summer, for summer school. So, and the money that was earmarked, I don't think will cover the remaining three grammar schools in its entirety. So we just, we're talking about what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
Member Shibilia?
The roof emergency that's noted for the Timoney.
Yep.
So when I read my packet, that was the first I've heard of a roof emergency at the Timoney. Can you add some background there?
Sure, I'll let Mr. Goslin add the background on the roof.
Out of the roof over the auditorium had blown off, similar to the Tenny. Not as bad.
And it wasn't during a torrential rain storm?
Yeah, no, it was more over the summer. It does need to be addressed. It has a temporary fix right now. It needs a little bit more of a permanent fix. We did get a quote for about $22,000. We are getting two additional quotes, and we'll be tackling that ASAP.
Have we?
That is just a Band-Aid. We will be needing a full roof replacement, but that's a year and a half out and a lot more than $22,000.
Fair. Also, just going back quickly to the onboarding of those two new roles, I just think it's worth calling out Mr. Stella. He has caught a lot of grief from this table over the last couple of months, or a year and a half or so. But now we're expecting him to stay and make our transition as smooth as possible. I just think it's worth, you know, kind of giving the guy a pat on the back, saying thank you, because I think you never know what you have until it's gone. So. Proverbial pat on the back.
Yes, no, we are, and he is very open to help. He will be starting these projects, so he's going to be around to help us make sure we see these through. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I want to mention briefly on the tail end of that, that when it comes to the Timoney roof, we've started to have that conversation with the CAFO, just to coordinate that. And then I also wanted to share an update briefly regarding the solar discussion. So the committee authorized us to proceed with the next steps of that. So we're trying to finalize an agreement with the solar company so that we can proceed with that. And the goal is to have it on the December 15th or 17th, I can't recall, I have the calendar in front of me, but it's in the middle of December. We're going to go to the city council to move forward with that, so that's moving along. We actually had a call with them today just to check in, and all the lawyers involved were able to go back and forth and iron out some of the areas of disagreement. So we're trying to get that settled in short order.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Through the chair to the superintendent, have we received any further feedback from the state regarding the accelerated repair program? Because that's a big issue.
I, we have not, and I, knowing that there's some interest there, I keep that email and the woman's email in my inbox, so it's always in my purview. And we have not. I mean, she basically just left it open and said months. That was in July. So we have not heard anything further if we are eligible or if we are going to be moving forward.
Now, it's not uncommon for members of the legislative delegation to advocate for school building assistance projects. I would love to loop in legislative delegation, including the senator.
Great.
And let them know if they can reach out, is a legislative liaison at the school building authority. I think there's an impasse here. This is a major gateway community. We have a lot of needs. We're going into an election year, so I think they need to be circled in as much as possible. Thank you.
I can reach out to both of them.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Two questions. The first one was regarding, last year, I remember I brought it up to school committee, the issue at the Marsh regarding the small gym. I know it was addressed last year, but I'm again coaching this year at the Marsh, and I've noticed that the flooring is still pretty damaged, and it's very difficult for the students to practice in that gym. So I was wondering if there's any like improvement or any progress on that. Second question is regarding the solar panels. I spoke a lot about that, I remember last year, just beginning. Is that for all the buildings or is that just for the MHS? Thank you.
The solar panel is just for the CGS and Tenny right now, because they have the new roof that we can put it on. So the projects are focused on those two schools, and we'll definitely have to look into the Marsh Gym again.
Yeah, it's my understanding that it was fixed.
It was repaired.
The last, it was repaired, and I've been through it several times, and I haven't noticed anything. Maybe there's something new in the last couple of weeks, but I will definitely check on that. You're welcome. I believe we have a walk-through at the Marsh Wednesday?
Yeah.
Next on the agenda, we have the Student Enrollment Data Report. Any questions from the committee regarding that? Member Maxwell?
I have a few questions. I don't know if you want me to ask question by question, or I can give them all to you and then maybe you can answer them after, but I'm wondering what the school's capacity limits are? And with the enrollment numbers, can we get a breakdown per school and grade of where they're coming into the district? The capacity at each school, I just mentioned that. And do we have projection numbers for this year and the next five years if in three months we've already had 656 new students? Are these new residents moving into the district? And I only ask because it's concerning when it comes to staff and class size and, you know, resources and all that, so I'm just curious.
What was the last one you just asked? So I have capacity number in each building, breakdown of school and grade.
Yep.
What was the next one after that?
Projection numbers for this year and possibly the next five.
Okay, and then what was the next one?
I think that was it. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Are these new residents moving into the district or are they just moved around or?
Yeah, so I'll knock one off. So the, these are only new to the district, so we can knock that off. So these numbers only include new enrollments.
So these 650 kids are new kids to the district?
Yeah, but keep in mind, right, that includes the whole new kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
Right, so when we do this, we start in August, and we keep the whole new kindergarten, which registers in August.
Okay.
Right, so the majority of the kids that you see in August are kindergarten.
Okay.
Okay, so keep that in mind. So the whole class of kindergarten across the district.
Okay.
But yes, the rest of that are new students. So what, right, so it's the number of withdraws, new students in and out.
Okay.
I will say, and I do want to prepare the school committee for this, is, we talked about this at the finance subcommittee, our October 1st enrollment is 200 less than last year. We have almost 100 less students enrolled in kindergarten, which we could not predict. And we have about 50 to 60 kids less in grade nine and 11. Those are our three spaces where we have, compared to last year's numbers, we are far lower than we were last year. So, you know, it's a conversation to be had because obviously enrollment numbers, that enrollment number is at the basis for our FY27 foundation budget. So I want to prepare people for that, right? That's about, last year would have been about $2 million, 200 students. So just keep that in mind when we look at the state aid. But also, I want to say that we've also increased our CTE seat by 200. Right, so we invested in our CTE programs, and a lot of that was for, actually, all of it was for all the right reasons. I don't think we have any program unfilled at this point. So we added the marketing, a teacher to the marketing pathway and a teacher to the EEC pathway, and our media program became an official Chapter 74 program. So a lot of things are happening in that, and there are additional dollars from state aid with students who are sitting in those pathway programs. So we might see it balance out. We might, you know, we just, I don't, I'm not sure, right? And it's all contingent upon what the inflation rate is, all of those things we've gone through in previous years. But I think it's important to say that out loud. Our preschool numbers are high and only growing. So keep that in mind. So our special education preschool numbers are growing. I think we have quite a few kids on deck to start, so we'll probably be back here in a few months and ask for an additional classroom. Seems to be par for the course at this point in time. So we have this, we have the early, and then they're not coming to kindergarten. This is the first year we've seen such a decline in kindergarten enrollment. So obviously with that too, you know, if there is a decline and that's the projections, then there will be a reduction in staff because of enrollment, not necessarily budget. Right, everybody with me? So like, there's all those things that are going to be parallel as we go through the process. So I think it's important to just say that now. We have the October 1 numbers, we know what was certified. And again, I did share that with the finance committee so that we are prepared for that.
I am.
Oh, and one more, I'm so sorry. One more comment on that. I also want to put this out there that, that here is the juxtaposition. While our enrollment is going down, 3,900 students qualify for free and reduced lunch. That is the highest number of students I have ever seen in my career in Methuen qualify for free and reduced lunch. So although our enrollment is going down, our needs are going up. I would not be surprised if we move up the cat, not up, it's not a cat, not up. But for the state aid, there's levels of what they do to subsidize with SOA for the low income. We're at a level 10. We have been at a level 10 probably for the past three years. We were at a level nine when it started. This may push us over to a level 11. That's a different dollar amount. So just, it's just interesting, right? I continue to say it, right, the needs of our students increase even though our numbers look like they are decreasing, but that still holds true with what kind of staffing we need and why. So just, those are facts at this moment.
Can I just add one more thing? I just wanted, I wanted to get back to the numbers of the breakdown per school and grade and then the capacity, only because I know that there's talk of a new addition to some buildings.
By whom?
By the council, and I just want to be able to.
There's what?
Well, it's a proposed thing on the council, but that has, that has nothing to do with it. I just, I want to have a number.
New development over across the street.
Yeah, I just want to have a number of like, if we're going to have 163 new units.
Oh, 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 not onto the school.
No, but those people potentially have kids, and I, that's why I just wanted to know what the capacity is per school.
Yes, and actually, the last time that we had, so we did this with Summit Place, we also did it with the Loop Apartments. Jack Wilson is very good about getting the projected data to me about how many kids would be impacted, which I'm sure he would do the same here. We didn't really see a huge influx from the apartments across from the Loop. Little bit, but not enough to throw any sort of class or group over the threshold.
Member DeZoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the question I have is, you said it was 200 less than last year. So I know COVID, we went down a significant amount. So how, if we base it off of COVID numbers, what we were previously, how far are we down now?
So we're still less than, we're actually less than where we were after COVID.
Right.
So we're certifying between 6,200 and 6,300 students.
We're like down 700, right? We were close to 7,000.
We've always been holding steady around 6,800 prior to COVID. After COVID, we dropped to about 6,500, 6,400. We were holding steady for the past few years at about 6,400, 6,500, and now we're down to, again, 200 less than that. It's the, for me, it's the kindergarten. That is not the trend that we have seen this year. It really was a difference. And then the two grade levels, looking at compared to last year, you know, dozens of kids less in grade nine and 11 than last year's numbers. I'm not sure what to make of that yet. I was just looking at it as it was getting certified last week. So again, this is all brand-new information, but I think important to us, this all has financial implications as we move forward.
And one more, and this has not got to do with our district placements too, right? Is it included or just withdrawals and, so just, just being clarifying of?
I'm not sure what you're asking, so.
Was any of these numbers less due to outer district placement?
No, no, so.
So this is just, just people either coming into our district?
Yep.
Or in the withdrawals that are coming out of our district?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Member Donovan?
This is making me think about the charter schools. I'm wondering, are we seeing an increase in Methuen students going to charter schools? And because that certainly impacts our budget.
So we have definitely seen an increase over years of the number of students going to charter schools. I don't know the numbers this year of the students in charter schools. Kindergarten is interesting because they don't have to go, right?
Right.
So these are also, which has been pointed out by various folks, right, this is the COVID year, students that would have been born during COVID that are coming to school and kindergarten. I have no idea if there's any correlation, but it's just something to think about.
And if I may, one more question? You know, we think about the preschool and the explosion of students that require the services provided.
Significant needs, yes.
In our preschool. Do we have any rooms left? It just seems like we filled that building. Now we're down to two?
Yeah.
Three, okay, I can't say. Three classrooms, spaces.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we will move on to the report from the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Any questions, comments? Member Maxwell?
I know that over the last two or three years, we've lost a significant amount of SEAs, at least eight people. I don't know how many we've lost over the last five years, but I know the audit references a lot of issues with IEP issues regarding compliance and all of that. But I just feel like we're losing far too much, too many special ed staff, especially administrators. Is that, you know, is that due to professional development? Is that due to poor work condition? Like, why are we losing them at such a high rate? And I know they have a workload of 270 to 300 students each, but I'm just curious if you've kind of looked into the reason why we're leaving, they're leaving.
The majority of the folks who have left, it's the workload. It's unrealistic, which is why we were hoping for the ETFs to help offset that. It doesn't change the number of cases, and it doesn't change the number of staff that they're also supervising, right? So those SEAs are actually evaluating and observing all this program assistance plus teachers in their building as well. So you have a multifaceted administrative responsibility to compliance, to parents, to students, to staff. So, you know, we are hoping that the ETFs will help. Unfortunately, we don't have them all filled because people aren't applying for them, which. which we kind of knew might happen, but, um, I just, I think that's a, a significant support that our SEAs need. So we do have them in place. At the Timony, we have the ETF in place, which is new. The Marsh has been in place. And the Tenny also is in place with these change, the changes that we've made. We have an interim SEA and an ETF in place.
Member Shabilia?
So with the program at the Marsh, um, it was brought to my attention, and I, I meant to reach out to you earlier today and it just, the day got away from me, that there are, what the teacher called staffing concerns. Because are we able to reach out to Constellations and add more people? Are they, are they not able to find them either? Because it sounds to me like there is a, um, a skew there in the ratio and people are starting to panic.
Yeah, so, uh, you'll see in your packet that we are making some requests and they are necessary, to try to make, uh, some things work better. And I would say Gina, and Gina more so than me, but I have been physically over there to meet with the teachers and the staff and try to figure out what to do moving forward. Hence, we're here tonight with some proposals. Um, I, I do think we're, we're reaching a saturation point, meaning that even the, the private contractors don't have the staff that we need. There's just not an endless supply of BCBA's, of RBT's, of behavior, you know, trained folks. Uh, special education teachers, I don't think they have any.
I know.
Um, so we, we are being pushed up against this wall of we are not able to recruit, but even the recruiters who pay more can't recruit the people with the licenses that we and other districts need. So we are, Constellations, hands down, has been, uh, remarkable to work with. I would still say that today with confidence. I think, uh, Gina, I don't want to speak for her, but would as well. Um, so they are working with us and doing everything they can to support us. Um, but we can't just make people appear. It's, it's a challenge. It is, uh, you know, we're probably at, what I would say, if I haven't said the word already, a crisis level of staffing, uh, just because we can't get the right people in. We're beyond the training our own. We, we have to train our own, but we don't have enough, right? And so, I don't know if you want to say anything. I just think that we, we're working the best with them that we can, but there are some agencies who just do not have any staff themselves.
I, I do want to add, because I've reached out to Beyond Constellations specifically for special education teachers for the pathways program. Um, I'd probably say I have my failures out to five or six different agencies at this time. They are searching just as hard and wide as they can. They have no applicants.
Yeah, my concern is, we can post all the jobs we want, but you can't make people apply to them.
Right.
And whether we post it or the third-party agency posts it, that tells me it's not about money, it's about availability. So the question then becomes, is there an opportunity to restructure it somehow so we can tap a pool of people that may otherwise not be available for the roles that we're trying to fill? So like, kind of a, a re- redesign of the model. I know you can't redesign out a teacher because you need a certificate, but, I mean, maybe there's a pool of, you know, I mean, for example, and I don't know if it's applicable, like a CNA, for example, may be a relatively decent substitute in a high-needs classroom, where those kids are going to need constant interaction, constant touch.
Um, so you're not off in the fact that we are actually talking to the staff at the Marsh right now about what it looks like to restructure? And everybody recognizes that's not something we're going to upend right now, but how do we need to limit reassign students' classrooms? How do we limit the number of students in a classroom based on need, right? Instead of saying just every class has eight kids in it, we're really taking a deeper look on like, maybe one class has four, but there are four staff in that room all day long, right? And then maybe there are more classrooms of eight that don't need all the staff because we are sort of separating out the needs of the kids better. Um, we really need the staff, is, I think they're really helping us try to figure that out.
But to add to that, to answer your question a little bit more, there's still a need or a level for a special education teacher to be involved for the different compliance pieces around the IEP, whether that's being the liaison, overseeing the curriculum, all of those pieces.
Right, but at what point does the state have to step in and say, we know you can't find teachers? I mean, it's not a secret, Methuen's not special.
Mm-hmm.
There, there are not teachers hiding behind a pole somewhere or a bus waiting to jump out and, gotcha. Like, at what point? Like, I, I don't know what our alternative avenues are.
I know.
And-
I, I can, I don't think our alternative avenue is going to come from the state. It's not going to be like, oh, what are we going to do differently? They, the compliance is the compliance and that's what they're going to look for from us. Is what are we doing to compensate? What are we doing to comply? Just didn't know what was going on. I, I just-
Only causing a ruckus.
Yeah, I just think that it's going to be, again, it's not going to come from the state. It's going to come from us doing different brainstorming.
Oh, boy.
And again, we, we are not alone. I, you know, I don't, I, I really, every time we have conversations about this, we're trying to think about it differently to be as proactive as we can. You know, I don't, again, it's just, it's a challenge. We're just, we're trying to make sure we're supporting our staff, make sure that we're doing right by the students. It's a challenge.
Yeah, and it's, it's scary because if we can't meet our burdens, then we have to send out a district.
Right. And even then-
You're on waitlist.
You're waitlisted at this point, right?
And we don't have the money.
Yes.
Just a follow-up question, um, and maybe it's off-topic and maybe we don't get an answer, but the Constellations staff, do, do they get on-boarded, just like our regular staff? They get an email, talking points, all of that?
Yes, but we're working through the talking points. There's been, it's like a-
Yes, we're working through closing the communication loop, for sure.
But yes, they get, they get a badge, they get all of, all of those pieces, yes.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Member Donovan?
Ms. Bozak, just looking ahead, I've been following, as I'm sure everyone else on the committee has, the dismantling of the Department of Education in Washington. Um, specifically, the department, within that department, the special ed department. About two million we get from federal funds right now? Is that about, right?
A little bit over.
Yeah, okay. About two million?
Mm-hmm.
Any updates? Because this is something we're going to have to start thinking about very seriously.
So no updates at this time beyond, um, last Friday, the, at the state special ed director's meeting.
Okay.
Um, they just really highlighted that IDEA is still the law and we still have the Massachusetts state sped laws and regulations and we are still working through all of the same work that we do at this time. But beyond that, they, there is no other guidance or projection as to what may be coming.
Okay, I just want people to be aware that we may face significant challenges.
You should throw Title I in there too.
Title I too, you're right.
That's unknown for FY twenty-seven.
Okay, so we're talking a significant amount of money-
Yes.
Impacting-
Yes.
Our special ed services. And I can't imagine what it's going to be like to, if we have to backfill some of our, um, teaching positions, you know, budget-wise.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it was, last year it was estimated three point one million dollars we paid in salaries with the two grants that would, just went to salaries.
Right. But I just think it's important that people start-
Up that a little bit.
Hearing this because we're going to face significant challenges that we, we already face now.
If it doesn't-
Funding, if it do, right. I am concerned though, given the discussion and how money could be dispersed down the road in a very different manner-
Correct.
Controlled by the administration.
Mm-hmm.
Which could mean, at a great cost to Massachusetts.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Well, I feel like Debbie Downer with that one, but I think it needs to get out there. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll move on to the HR report. Any questions or discussion from the committee? Member Shabilia?
Ms. Bozak, for the BCBA's, I've, I've been looking around at what other districts are doing and knowing that no two districts are the same. And knowing that the BCBA's are hard to come by, what would the difference there be if you guys were to, instead of looking for a BCBA, were to look for like LICSW's? Because-
Skill.
Yeah, it's a skill set.
BCBA actually does the functional behavioral assessments. A licensed social worker could not do that. It's a different skill set and different assessments.
Okay, so when I was looking at, I specifically looked at Lowell because they have all their stuff posted on their website.
Sure.
Um, at my cursory glance, it looked to be very similar, uh, because it becomes that, that de-escalation and kind of process management. So, I mean, if it's something that we can't fill and we're having perpetual problems filling it, maybe it's time to, I don't know, maybe rework the model. Maybe, again, it's like the school psychologist. I know we can't get rid of them because we need them to do the write-ups, but we're never going to find them. So, and I know that's been the bane of everyone's existence for years. So I, I just, it, it may be time to start looking at alternatives because I don't know if those people, like, this whole industry of education has a decline in enrollment from the college level and it's not going to get better. So we're going to have to get more creative.
And also keep in mind Lowell, Haverhill, Lawrence, all have alternative schools within their public school. We do not.
Right.
Right, so they have an alternative school that could act as sub-separate placement for students and not send them out of district.
Yep.
We do not have that.
Right, but when I was looking at, their allies were in their buildings, not just- Their allies were in their buildings, not just in their, I don't know what you call the other building, the sub-separate building.
It's an alternative school. They all, all of them have it. Yeah, I mean, it's, we, we're going to have to think as far outside the box as we can to a degree, but there is a specific skill set that the BCBA's have that are especially the sub-separate program for ASD needs. It's the behavioral management that is key and they do programming for that. That would not be training a licensed LSW, or licensed LS, LICW.
Yeah, yeah, all the letters.
Okay, all the letters. Social work, I forgot that.
Not all of our BCBA's are assigned to special education programs specifically, right? So we, you know, like our BCBA at the CGS, she's there for the, for the building.
Different ways to look at it.
Yeah, just figured I'd throw it out there.
Worth conversating. Conversating?
Member Maxwell?
Not sure that's a word. Worth the conversation. My apologies.
So would we benefit from an alternative school?
Um, likely, but you're, you're talking, I mean, the last time I presented for an alternative school for the high school, you're looking at a startup cost of about five million dollars. And at that point, we just couldn't do it. And then you need a space.
Thank you.
Staffing, space and money to, to upfront the cost of that with the staff that you need. Because you can't do a piecemeal, right? Like, you need the staff that you need. Yeah, so it, it would be a work. It, it is, this is why, and I've said this before, people sometimes from the outside who don't sit here and have these conversations think that we overutilize Crest collaborative because we are a high sending member school. And we are, except I'm a high member school because I don't have an alternative school within Methuen Public Schools to use, whereas Haverhill sends half the number of kids to Crest because they have an alternative school within their own public school, right? So it's just, I, you know, we're relying on our collaboratives a lot more for, for our needs that we can't meet in district. Some of the other larger districts have other options.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Chair?
On the, um, the color-coded one?
Yep.
Can we get a key that tells us what the color coatings mean? Um, because I, I had spoken with Ms. Bozak beforehand and she did explain to me that the blue was unit A and the red is unit C. But without, without having that conversation right before this meeting, I didn't know that. So I'm just wondering if we can just make sure that that's clear so that somebody from the general public who's reading this would understand that.
You're talking about the staffing update, right?
The staffing, yeah.
Yep.
So blue appears to be unit A, red appears to be, um, unit C, and then the dark, like teal color appears to be unit B.
Which is also hard to delineate because the blue and the gray kind of look the same.
Right.
Yeah.
So just to, just to make it clear, so, because it, we used to have a, a column and the color coding is fine, it's just that it's, it wasn't clear what it was, that's all.
Yep, will do.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Loud rain.
I believe that's rain.
Yeah, it is rain.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good. It's very loud.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the HR report? Uh, if not, we'll move on to, uh, the out-of-school suspensions and other disciplinary actions report. Questions, comments? Member Maxwell?
I know I, um, approached this the last, uh, one of our last meetings that if we could break them down a little bit different, um-
Talk to me about how you want it broken down.
Yeah, so, um-
I'll write that down this time.
There's, there's a few, so if I go too fast, just-
Yep, I got it.
Total number per school, total number of individual students, um, and average length of suspension per, um, incident. And then separate them by categories, by grade level, status, meaning gen ed, special ed or English learners. Um, did the incident involve a student with a behavior plan? And then separate the categories into fighting, attacking, and then bullying, harassment or threats.
You lost me.
I lost you.
Yeah, you just, I ran out of space. I just, all the stuff you're asking for, we started with that, I think, a year ago and then we went to this because our, I would not be able to, everything you're asking me to, I would not be able to pull from infinite campus like I do this report. I literally would have to create a whole nother document like it gets submitted at the end of the year for our state reporting.
Maybe even just once yearly so we could get an update and follow that. I mean, I think that would be helpful only because, like, if we had a, a post-suspension update also, you know, where we, did the student have a reentry meeting? Did they get referred to counseling or BCBA or guidance or, you know? I don't, I think that, I'm asking this because I went to, most recently, I went to an, um, a CPAC meeting. And in that CPAC meeting, um, it was a concern of a lot of the parents of, you know, we just don't know the, the why behind the numbers or how things are being handled. Um, so I think it would, it would clear up a lot of, you know, questions.
So I'd say two things. So annually, which I can certainly give you all, there is a report that we have to upload every summer. That is the annual report for our student discipline that has most of the stuff you're asking.
Okay.
I mean, I can just print that from Desi's website and give that to you-
Okay.
In a document. Yep, go ahead, Mar.
No, I was going to say, and we can, uh, you can follow up with that with, you guys on the, uh, next school committee can actually do that annual report and go over how discipline was, maybe that will help you with policies and stuff like that to where actually the district should go with discipline by just looking at that data.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's why I brought it up, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's actually a really good idea.
That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the out-of-school suspensions report? If not, we'll move on to old business and other pending matters. We have on the agenda tonight a, an update regarding our discussion about the superintendent search. So as you recall during the last meeting, uh, I was, uh, in essence tasked with-
I don't see her.
The, so just to share an update, uh, I was tasked with the, uh, concept of, uh, you know, beginning the process of determining what we need in order to get the quotes in order to bring on, uh, a consulting firm, uh, to assist us with the search process. In order to go out to get the quotes, we need to have a clearly outlined list of specifications that we'd be looking for by way of that process, um, et cetera. And so, uh, I have, uh, tasked Member Donovan to, in essence, be my point person as it relates to, uh, you know, I guess, uh, next steps when it comes to getting this process before, uh, the committee. Uh, so I wanted to share that update. Uh, the other thing too is that, uh, we have been in touch with Ms. McCarthy regarding, um, those specifications, uh, simply because there are a lot of things that, uh, we're able to avoid having to reinvent the entire wheel as it relates to getting these quotes. Uh, you know, we, we did have the search process, I believe, back in twenty eighteen roughly. Uh, and so- And so, she will have some information to share regarding thoughts about the specifications that we're gonna want to include. Member Donovan, I don't know if you have anything else?
If I may, I don't know if we could delay a little bit. Colleen has been kind enough to pull together everything we need to know about a superintendent search, including the brochure that was put together last time to create, when stakeholders were interviewed, to see what we need, what we're looking for as a community. Is she here?
Yeah.
Yay, right on time.
Perfect timing.
She's pulled together a lot of great information that I think we all need to take a look at and decide what our next steps are.
I'm gonna grab a chair. So, as we talked about during the last meeting, we have this requirement to get a minimum of three quotes. If we're expecting the process cost to go over the $50,000 mark, which is unlikely, but if it does happen, then we would need to go out to bid. So, given the fact that we have some considerations along those lines, I thought it would be helpful to reach out to Ms. McCarthy and seek some just initial thoughts and guidance, simply because this is something that we've done before. And again, with the goal of trying to avoid reinventing the wheel, I'll pass it off to her.
So, what I, what I did was, I went on to, I belong to Mass Association of School Personnel Administrators. We have a listserv, where we bounce ideas off of each other, and I grabbed some resources there for you guys to have the opportunity to take home and peruse through. There are some consulting firms that I found on the listserv that other communities have used. Some outside of our website and school spring and the normal places that we advertise for positions, some other organizations that people have posted for superintendents, along with some scope, sample scope of services that other communities have used when looking for a consultant. And I also put on some materials that I had from our last superintendent search, just for you guys to review and figure out which direction you want to go in.
So, we're not taking any formal votes tonight, this is more of an FYI in terms of, you know, this process of putting together the specifications. I personally, we can have a discussion, you know, I think it's probably beneficial to us to, you know, digest this. We could always have a follow-up meeting, a special meeting, something like that, if we want to take formal action. But I think, long and short of it, we simply have to get the quotes. This is the type of format that we're gonna want to use in terms of outlining the specifications. When it comes to something like this, say, on the city side, you know, this wouldn't be part of the public discussion that I would have with the city council, we have the procurement office, they take care of this internally. But given the fact that I know this is of significant interest to the committee, we wanted to kind of open this up, show all the sausages made by way of this process of getting the quotes. Member Willlet?
I really appreciate this. Is there a national organization that would be included on the list? Because it's, the dynamic is Massachusetts and New England for places to post. Is there a national organization that we would be ultimately posting to? Because if we're doing local, New England, Massachusetts, and then national, do we have that in place?
There's definitely some national organizations, I think it's AS, AAS, AAS, we could also post there. I just put some things out there for you guys to decide where you want to go.
Member Willlet, some of these, the consultants to run a search, some of them do national searches. So, please know that.
I'm just saying, in terms of places to post, ultimately, I know we can have a consultant.
Yeah, like, a good example is, you know, for MASC, they have the ability to go wide.
Right.
Okay.
In terms of their reach, yeah.
But MASC now is conducting fifteen, fifteen searches right now for, which is insane. And, you know, I know there's been a lot of discussion about when we start, should we hold off for the new committee? But I'm afraid if we continue to have discussions and not act, we're putting our district in jeopardy. We really are.
Yeah.
Especially with some districts closing and picking people for next year. I mean, we'd hate to, a second, you know, Tom Brady's a great example, he wasn't picked in the first draft, but we're really hedging our bets here. And I also think it's worth noting, if we do an international, did I say international? Some districts do that, though. A national search, we have to think about the cost. Because if we're gonna do it right, and I know you really, really have made this clear, we would have to fly the candidates out for our site visits, our meetings with parents and staff, and then ideally, we would fly some members of our search committee out to their site. So, it's all gonna cho-ching, cho-ching. So, let's keep, you know, all these things to think about.
Member Shabili?
Colleen, in your research, or maybe Member Donovan, how long does it typically take under the best of scenarios to run a superintendent search?
Two to four months, I would say.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking a couple of months, like, this isn't a okay, I was gonna say, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen overnight. There's a lot, they have to come out, they're gonna pull.
So, is that three to five to hire? Or to when a candidate pool would come to whoever the interviewing body is gonna be for first round?
Yeah, you're probably at appointment, by five, you're at appointment, but just know that traditionally administrators usually get hired in February and March.
That was my next question.
Because of their contracts, if they have contracts in other communities, especially in Massachusetts. So, you're getting close to your timeline.
So, if we don't do something real soon in a hurry, then the conversation should switch to interim.
That's a committee decision.
Sounds to me like a logical one.
Member DiZoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just saying, though, like, I just don't want, want it to be rushed. That's what I'm concerned, that we get a bunch of candidates and then we're in a position where we're like, we have to make a decision on these candidates. So, I, as Mr. Member Willlet was saying, a national search, and I get the expenses and everything. I don't know if a Zoom would first be a proper way of doing it. I've never done a superintendent search. But at the end of the day, if we're gonna pick the right candidate, we shouldn't just limit ourselves to New England and Massachusetts. We should be able to post anywhere that we need to post to make sure we're bringing in candidates that are best for our district. But I'm concerned that we're, I get that we have to act, I totally agree with you, we should stop the search committee. I'm, what I'm hearing, by February, by February, I just don't want it to be rushed, that we have to pick one of these candidates. Well, not us, I won't be here, but you guys picking just a candidate, just a fellow position.
And that's where I think the idea of being flexible in terms of our own consideration, having at least the interim idea on the table, so that we aren't, kind of, we don't have a gun to our head, so to speak. And we are able to be thoughtful and deliberative about the process. So, I think it behooves us to just have all options on the table, yeah.
So, I'm assuming, I mean, this is new to everybody, and it's an incredible amount of work. Do we want to take some time to look at the scope of services, the examples here? And at our next meeting, perhaps talk about what are we looking for to put this together? And then, we have to, well, get three quotes or? So, we can't really even start the process until with, we get this work done. So, that's also worth considering. Does that sound fair? I know you're the expert in hiring, but you are.
It's fair, you have to decide what you, what scope of services you're looking for in order to take the next steps.
And I guess my other question is, we have to determine salary.
Right.
I, I also would like to potentially bring in the other two new school committee members, one being right next to us, but but I think she, she should also be providing what she was, is looking for. Plus, Counselor DiZoglio, which will be Member DiZoglio, should be able to come in and say, well, I'm looking for those as well. So, we should include them as well, yep.
But this is just the scope of work, of what we want the consulting company to do, not what we want in a superintendent.
Yeah, but
I don't
All right.
Like, we, I don't, I mean, sure, they can come and
Yeah, they have, have their, if they can't show up, they can't show up. But I'm just saying, if they could just trying to include everybody.
We're certainly not gonna select a superintendent.
No, 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 I'm not saying selected, but maybe they have a scope and an idea, because especially Member Counselor DiZoglio was on the last time, on, was around when we selected Brandy for a superintendent. My brother was on that school committee that selected her. So, he actually has experience in superintending search. Can't believe I'm giving him credit. But, but I think he would be somebody that would give us an idea as well. So, I'm just trying to include the new members as well.
So, I think that a good next step would be to, you know, bring this forward at our, the next time we're together. Do we want to be open to a special meeting? I actually think that that would be a good, a very good topic for a special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think that as part of that meeting, we need to include the conversation of interim. I agree, it shouldn't be rushed, and the next group shouldn't have to be over the barrel to pick a superintendent under the gun. And that's, I mean, that's the way we roll here, we don't do anything in the city quickly. To think that we're gonna be able to put this together and get a superintendent and have that person be ready to start in six months, when there are literally fifteen of them going on now, and what was it, five or six that just wrapped up over the last month or two? That's stupid. We need to include a conversation about interim, we need to be prepared.
Mr. Chairman.
Member Willlet?
We can have multiple conversations, but we had an election, we're gonna have a new school board in January. So, I'm open to multiple possibilities, but I'm not going to be rushed into an interim superintendent either. I don't see it. We set the process, we have the foundation. You will work with Colleen McCarthy, and I have confidence in Member Donovan. Let's go through the process, if we need a special meeting, I'm all in favor of that. This whole thing about an interim, I don't see the urgency at this moment in time, I really don't.
I think at this point, it behooves us to really focus on setting the table for this process, and I think that we can accomplish that with a special meeting and have the focus of that be establishing a scope of services for the consulting firm that we can then use to get our quotes. And I think that we would probably want to schedule that quickly, so we can maybe coordinate offline and discuss some dates and get that scheduled. And then this will give us also some time to take a look at some of these ideas. And then we'll have, I guess, more definitive discussion next time. Any other thoughts, Member Donovan?
So, I just want to make sure we clarify when we have our next meeting, we all come to the table having maybe looked at the examples of scope of services, identifying what we want to see in our own search. I just, I think, I just needed to say that out loud for myself, okay? Does that, does that make sense? So, we have our homework to look at this and say, this is what we want, this is what we don't want, we'll put together. There, okay.
Are you guys looking for a special meeting before 11:24?
Yes.
Before that? Okay.
Anything else? Thank you for compiling all this.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else under context of superintendent search? All right, we'll move on. So, next, we're on to new business. We have ratification of the Unit B MOU, we need a motion and a second to approve.
So, moved.
Motion from Vice Chair, second from Member Donovan, discussion. For.
I'll take questions, if you have questions.
Member Maxwell?
This is for the Unit B MOA, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are we voting on the contract, or are we voting on these additions?
So, the memorandum of agreement is the change to the actual contract, nothing else in the contract changed but those articles. That's what you're voting on tonight?
So, is, is there still opportunity to make changes to the contract?
No. So, we've, every executive session we've had with Unit B, this is what the document is that came together.
Okay.
Just took us a while to actually write it in an MOU.
Okay. And I noticed that in one of the, the Article 22, it says, "Such party shall be given written notice of this to the other not later than October 1st preceding the termination date." So, if for some reason we did need to terminate, it would, we would have to give written notice eight months before we wanted to terminate the position?
No, I need to, what, where, what section are you reading from?
Article twenty, it says amend Article 22.1 to read as follows. It's the second, it says duration.
What number is it, Member Maxwell?
Number two.
I believe that's the duration of the contract, that has nothing to do with yeah, duration is the duration of the contract. The agreement is effective, the contract agreement, not personnel.
I see, okay. And then where it says remove references to 12-month positions, remove references to vacations as applicable. Where are those?
Which number are you on?
Three, uh, yep, three.
Housekeeping, remove references to twelve, so anywhere in the contract that it said 12-month, removing to 10, that's the whole point of this contract. So, it's just a housekeeping, that means you go through and do a find and replace of everything, we agree to that.
But we're still gonna have 12-month positions?
No, we're not, not in Unit B, you're not.
Not at all?
None.
Okay. And then here, where it says the salary and compensation, says that the guidance head position shall receive a $7,500 annual stipend to be paid at the end of August.
Yep.
For the MHS Master Scheduling and Summer Enrollment, I thought principals handled scheduling.
Not at the high school, not for 2,000 kids, they don't.
So, the guidance
The guidance has always handled that, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Where does the language from 5.2 go? I know it's stricken out, but where does it go, does it not exist anymore?
You have to give me the number.
5.2?
Yeah, but what number?
Oh, is that
It's eight, nine, 10, like, what number are you looking at?
Oh. 11. Sorry. Also, I think that's because maybe they went from 11 to 10? Yeah, okay.
Is she behind me nodding? She's gonna jump in if I'm not saying it right, yes, so 5.2, yes, is because they're going from 12 to 10.
Okay, and then 5.2 says that it's a 200-day work year, and then 5.3 says that 12-month positions are for APs even in this new draft. So, if we're not having 12-month
So, under, so you see where it says effective July 1, 2026, this is a two-year contract, so some of this language still holds for 25, 26.
Okay, okay.
Right, so where you Right, so where you're doing this year as a whole, which they're 12-month, and then moving them to 10-month for.
Okay, so we start to plan for.
Correct, so we had to delineate language like this, leave some in and note that we're taking some out as of July 1.
Okay.
Okay.
That was it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Briefly, I know this is something that's been in the works for a while, but I just want to mention there are some committee members that don't have the printed copy of the agreement in the packet. And I know that on the website, there hadn't been a link to this. So I would recommend as a safe measure, a motion to table. And this is something that we can approve at the next meeting.
It also says.
I don't know why, why would you, I'm just curious why we'd take, this is how we always do MOUs. Until they're ratified, you have them in your hand to approve and then we post it.
It also says that this comes with job descriptions.
We did it for Unit A, C, and everything else.
And we don't have those.
We have a copy of it right now, we haven't seen it.
I, I sent it to all of you when I sent you the agendas and the packets.
Yeah, I mean, I have it.
I attached it to the email saying that the agenda was ready.
So with this contract, it says that we have job descriptions attached to all of these titles and we don't have those. So can we get those before we?
It is on the agenda, of course it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, but it's not, there's no link.
No, I know. I've never done, so we've always done this, this is how Mike Macaro has advised us to do this, that we don't put the MOU for public consumption. We give it to the union for ratification and then we give it to school committee for ratification. And then it's public, once it's ratified. So it's on the agenda to vote and you all had it for the 48 hours you needed to approve it?
There's still questions, I don't think we, we don't need to have it done immediately tonight. I would strongly recommend, I think, given, just a motion to table.
Yeah, due to the fact that, especially the descriptions, I think that's something we should look at as well.
Do we have the motion?
Oh, motion to table.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll table, we'll take it up at the next meeting. Next, we have, we need a motion and a second to approve the tendits in place lease addendum.
So moved.
Motion from Member DiZoglio, second from Member Shabelia. Discussion.
So I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago. This is a simple addendum to the formal tendits in lease that we did a year ago. And all it is doing is making the adjustment for the actual square footage that they are using. In the original lease, we had the estimate that we used in the RFP. And so we want to make sure that these are the actuals. They don't, they, with all the right reasons, they don't want to make renovations on additional spaces without those spaces really outlined for us. So we're looking for approval tonight. I will need to send this to City Council for approval as well because they did the final approval on the full lease. So I will send this off in the morning to the, to the chair and hope that they can put it on a subsequent City Council meeting.
Questions, discussion? If not, we'll vote, are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the CTE Parent Advisory Councils.
So moved.
Motion from Member DiZoglio, second from Member Donovan. Discussion.
So I'd like, I'd like, there's two things here tonight, and I know we have Ms. Melanson here to join us to give some updates on the CTE and then explain the parent advisory councils that you are accepting tonight. Just to give some background, maybe it will answer some questions that you might have. And then if not, we're all here to answer any questions that you might have. Oh, I'm sorry. I usually pass that off backwards.
Hi, everyone, thank you. What is in your packet is our list of our Program Advisory Committee members. The Program Advisory Committee meets twice a year, once in November and once in March. They consist of teachers, business and industry partners, higher education partners from colleges and universities, parents and students. And the purpose is to look at our curriculum, what we're doing in our classes, evaluate that, take a look at trends in industry, trends in higher education and needs that they're finding, and make changes to our curriculum as we see fit based on their recommendations and what they're seeing. So the one, we've had one meeting last week, there's two this week and two next week as well. But we're just asking you to, to take a look at that and approve of that for us.
Member Maxwell.
Just two quick questions. Who selects the members and how do they get selected?
So for, starting a couple of years ago, we just started reaching out to local community members. We get some of the people from our externship programs, businessmen, members that are working with our students in externship that join. We have Northern Essex Community College, we have Merrimack College, it's just a bunch of different ones in the area. We pretty much reach out to many, as many colleges and universities as we can, as well as industry partners, with, we have any kind of networking with.
And then like as far as students and parents, how do you reach out to them? Or are they just kind of students that you know you have a relationship with?
No, so the teachers will post on their Google Classroom the flyer that explains to the students what it's for. There are two real types of involvement students can have. They can be student council members or they can be student ambassadors. So it's open to anybody and so the students are able just to even just join and listen to what our partners have to say. They can also be student ambassadors who can speak to their experience and kind of ask questions as well. For parents, we send a talking points home, similar flyer. It explains the purpose of the pack and just asks for anyone who has a student in that pathway, if anyone would like to join, share their experience and, you know, help with us to mold the pathway.
Okay. And then it says that you guys meet twice yearly. Are those public meetings and can?
Yeah, they are.
Do they, are there minutes or?
They, there are minutes for them, they are public, they're virtual right now, which is actually, we found that to be really helpful. We have partners at Northeastern University and, you know, just from all over. And they're from 2:15 to 3:15. So yeah, that's open to.
And anybody can join?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
I noticed your multimedia production and broadcasting doesn't have a parent. Is it required? And if it is, what are you going to do?
We have reached out, Mr. Wilkins is currently working to get a parent on the committee. We had one last year, but their student graduated. So we are currently still working on that one. That is the one we don't have.
And if we approve this without it, do we have to reapprove it when you get one?
I think we could just make you aware that we've added a parent when we do have that name.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote, are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have Finance and Operations. We'll start with the Expenditure Report. Any questions from the committee? Member Maxwell.
Just one question about the revolving accounts. The rental, the facility rentals, is there a breakdown of who rents our facilities and what the breakdown costs are? Okay. That's all.
Member Shabelia.
For the ice rink, and being down there and spending a lot more time down there than I used to, I've noticed it's always the same two people. And they're, what my understanding is, they're getting an awful lot of overtime down there. Are we, I mean, we have plenty of cash in that revolving fund because that ice rink is self-sufficient, more so than anything else in this city. How do we turn that into bodies?
It's a great question. If you know anyone who wants to work in the ice rink, we're hiring. We've been interviewing them as fast as we can. We actually believe we may have one that we just interviewed on, I think, Thursday. He's interested, we're interested, we're recommending him. He'll go through the background process, et cetera, and hopefully get on board ASAP. And usually a full staff is three. We did have three. One left us and we've been struggling to find another one. So anybody interested, let us know. We, I mean, I'm very interested in even signing people up part-time. You know, train them, you know, whatever, and, you know, hopefully in addition to our regular guys. So if they need to take a day off, we, you know, we bring in a part-timer rather than, you know, overtime necessarily.
And that's under the custodial unit, right?
Correct. It's posted, yeah. Well, it was posted, it might have been closed now that we recommended somebody.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the Grants Report. Any questions from the committee?
I have a question.
Member Maxwell.
I see a grant from the state that says 127 Option 1 Supporting Mental Health and Well-being for $80,000. What does that go to? Do you need the fund code? 35126.
127.
126.
Oh, 126?
Yeah.
No, on the side, it's 36126.
Nope, 35126.
We have a few that relate to the same areas, I wanted to make sure I had the same, the right one. So that's, that's a grant that's specifically for supporting mental health of newcomer homeless students that Mr. Crocker and I have a spreadsheet going of how we're spending the money that overlaps from, Tyup knows what I'm talking about, from different mental health awareness. So that would be like Carisolus in some ways. In some ways, we have collaborative problem solving. In some ways, we have an MTSS revisioning team going on right now where we're trying to map K-12, all of our SEL curriculum. We're working our MTSS system district-wide. So we're using that money in a lot of ways and we're really fortunate to have an increase in the original allocation for that grant.
I could be wrong, but I also think that also includes the teacher training as well for the Massachusetts partnerships for youth?
Yes, that includes that as well.
Very good one. Also, it may also include thinkfast interactive shows for students, which I think would be a great investment.
Yes, that happens to, different fund code, but still important in the same line. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll move on to the Student Activity Reports. Any questions from the committee?
I do want to make you aware that I'm emailing the principals this week to make sure that the eighth grade accounts are closed out. Some have done it, some haven't. Also, I'll be coming to you probably next month with my yearly. I want these accounts removed, these ones added. Some of them have already gone ahead and put kindergarten in, even though you guys didn't vote on it. But it will be coming to you next meeting, or next month.
If there are no questions, we will move on to the Food Service Report. Member Willis.
Just very quickly, I am very appreciative that we're doing a survey of the students. I just want to relay that. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, we'll move on to the Warrants. Just as a refresher, so the school committee gets these warrants to sign off on on a weekly basis. This is simply an acknowledgement of them, in essence, acceptance of the warrant reports. So what we'll do is we'll start with the warrant of September 12th, 2025. We need a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion. Member Maxwell.
So I know that these were already approved and signed off on, but I did want to ask if we could, there's a few parts to my questions. I just wanted to ask if we could get a breakdown of special ed broken down by category, out-of-district tuition, transportation contracted services, public collaborative, private day, residential. Because I went through each warrant and it was kind of hard to, to pull. But just an S-13 alone, this warrant that we're talking about, I came up with $592,000 that went to special ed and out-of-district costs and, which left $222,994 for in-district expenses. So I just think that if we have a breakdown, and I think that we should have one because of Circuit Breaker, if we could share those categories with the committee quarterly, then we could kind of track the special ed that we're putting, I mean, we're putting a lot of money out in contracted services, in out-of-district tuition. And in-district, we're left with $200,000. I mean, it's, that's a tough pill to swallow.
Yeah, we, we plan during the budget cycle to use, we're going to get approximately $10 million in Circuit Breaker this year.
Yeah.
We plan on using that. So what we do is we spend on the regular general budget funds. And now we're switched over to using the Circuit Breaker ones to spend that $10 million that we know we're getting back. But I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but maybe we could set up a time you could come down, we can sit down and come up with a form that makes sense.
Yeah, that would be great.
And I can pull up the numbers on Munis so we can look at them and just try to make something that makes sense and is relatively easy to pull.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would be nice to see, you know, what we're putting out in special ed versus what we're putting out in general ed. And not for any other reason than just to compare, like are we in, moving in the right direction or, you know, that's all.
We can definitely do that.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Member Maxwell voting present, the ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of September 22nd, 2025.
So moved. So moved.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, second is from Member DiZoglio. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I am going to be voting present on all of them only because I have asked for this breakdown before and haven't gotten it, and not through you, Ian. So I, I would love to sit down and talk to you about it, but for now, I'll just be voting present and that's all.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Member Maxwell voting present. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of September 26, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion's from Member Shabelia, the second is from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with Member Maxwell voting present. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of October 2nd, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion. Member Maxwell.
This is 16, correct? S-16? That's the one we're talking about? Okay. I know that we had a couple expenses for textbook. There was one for $21,000, a payment of $21,000 for textbooks. Is that the new TKLA curriculum?
I'd have to look. The new TKLA is a one, one-time yearly payment of $199,000. Which is already paid.
Yeah, it wouldn't be that.
I would have to look to see what that $21,000 specifically was. Do you know, you don't know off the top of your head, do you?
It's likely a digital text that, that isn't new to us. Just a renewal, I'd imagine. I don't know specifically which one it would be.
I can look that up for you as well. That's, that's simple enough.
And then there was another one to WHS Cheer.
What was it?
WHS Cheer. Okay.
You know what? What was the amount? All right, it's all right. Chances are, that's like a, a membership to some cheer competition or something.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah. Don't ask me what WHS means, but.
Probably Woburn High School.
There you go. The amount's probably like $200 or $250 or something, yeah.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with Member Maxwell voting present. We need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of October 9th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, second is from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with Member Maxwell voting present. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of October 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion's from Member Shabelia, second is from Member DiZoglio. Discussion. So discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with Member Maxwell voting present. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of October 23rd, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Motion's from Member DiZoglio, second is from Member Shabelia. Discussion. If there's no discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with Member Maxwell voting present. Lastly, we need a motion and a second to approve the warrant of October 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Vice Chair Keegan. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with Member Maxwell. Opposed, the ayes have it, with Member Maxwell voting present. Next on the agenda, we have contract awards. There are none tonight. Next, after that, we have grant awards. We need a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2026 grant awards.
So moved.
Motion is from Member DiZoglio, second's from Member Shabilia. Discussion? There's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have notifications of appointments and other personnel matters. We need a motion and a second to approve the Pathways program staff.
So moved.
Motion is from Member DiZoglio, second's from the vice chair. Discussion? Member Maxwell?
I know all of these positions, I'm sorry, which one are we on the request?
Pathways?
For pathways, okay. I know that these say the positions are funded by Circuit Breaker funds. Are we allowed to use Circuit Breaker funds for this? I'm only asking because I know that out-of-district tuition and contracted services, we can use those funds for that, but I didn't know if that includes more.
Mr. Goslin, do you want to explain?
Yeah. So what would happen is we'd make a transfer of expense from the regular budget into Circuit Breaker, freeing up the money in the regular budget, usually what I would do. I know it's allowed. Ordinarily, we just use contracted services, tuitions, and transportation. It's allowed that we can do it. Typically, I like to spend it out of the salary accounts. So I'll just do a transfer of expense so that other expenses, tuitions or whatever, would be moved into Circuit Breaker, which would free up money for those positions. Love that look, Gina.
Well, I just, I mean, I think just the global answer is Circuit Breaker funds can, there, you can spend it on anything special education related. Okay, yes.
Vice Chair?
So I've had a lot of conversations with people and, you know, safety is my utmost concern over at the Marsh. I am very concerned about the things that I'm hearing from the Pathways program, honestly. So I'm happy to see that we're going to be trying to get more staff. But I feel like we need somebody to oversee that program all by itself. And I know that we tried to, we had conversations about a private day for that building or for that program, but even though we're not going in that direction, I feel like we need someone to oversee that program all by itself to make sure that it's safe. And my second thing is, is that without the staff there right now, because we haven't approved it and you haven't filled those positions, what are we doing right now to keep those kids safe and to keep the staff safe, because it is very concerning.
I don't think there's any way, easy way to answer this because I can't get into details about specific thing, you know, specific student scenarios. The reality is, this proposal is coming from the staff that are in it every day. What you didn't see in this proposal was their request for special education teachers for every classroom, because we already have that in the budget, we just have not been able to identify. We have been continuing to work with constellations as well as our current BCBA that's attached to that program on training of the program assistants, of training of the special education teachers. Right now, this is the part that we need to add this additional layer for those, for those additional safety components.
The larger conversation we've had that brought us here with the staff in the program and the new BCBA was really helpful in the, their programs are staffed with what we put in the budget. So like, we started with that, right? So it's, you have the program assistants, you have the people, other than them sharing the two classrooms, I don't want to minimize that, right? So what is it that you need differently, right? Like another program assistant probably isn't it. What is it that you need? And we really challenged them to come up with like, we need a real proposal of something that could be realistic, and this is where we landed, from what they gave us. You know, and I think I've had multiple conversations with our union presidents as well to say, our hope is that now that we have the RBT recognized in the program assistant contract, that while we don't have program assistants in Methuen who currently have that certificate, we may be able to recruit differently now. They have been incredibly cooperative in looking at the contract and waiving some things that are currently in the contract for us to allow to post and hire these people. It's not just a substitute position, right? We, we're in a, they are recognizing the position that we're in and they have been incredibly supportive in our conversations about what's happening. And so they're acutely aware, because they're hearing the same things we are, that you are, that they are, right? Everybody is hearing the same things and trying to figure out what the best solution is. And so it's helpful. And so they know that we're here right now, they're probably watching right now. But they know that we're here requesting these three different scenarios for you guys, the Pathways, the preschool, those are our two most needy populations in programs right now. We are, you know, we're hopeful that word of mouth, we can get some of these staff and we'll, we're going to go from there. But we have, we have to try to do this. We can't do anything until it gets approved, but we're going to try to do this and do some pretty hard recruiting.
Thank you.
Member Maxwell?
Just to kind of piggyback off of Member Keegan, I know that the CGS has the Pathways program, I mean, the, sorry, the Marsh has the Pathways program, but I would like to take a look at our safety across all of the schools. I know that we have some safety concerns at the Timoney and my concern with the staffing is that, you know, we have forty-two more students at the Tenny than we do the Timoney and we have thirty-eight more staff at the Tenny than we do the Timoney. You know, so I don't know how, I don't know how you guys kind of work that out and figure out the staffing, but there are some significant safety concerns, not just at the Marsh, but at other grammar schools as well. So is there a way to, I don't know, ensure safety to all of, you know, the schools?
Of course, that's our goal. Our number one priority is safety. I also think you just, you have to, we have to look at the numbers and understand the programs. The Tenny has a sub-separate footsteps program that has far more staff and needs than the Timoney. The Timoney doesn't have a sub-separate program in their school, it's a partial inclusion. So there's no sub-separate programs at the Timoney, so you're not going to see as many staff. So there's just, you know, it's understanding the different programs in the building, the Marsh and the Timoney, I mean, the Marsh and the Tenny have the two sub-separate programs, the largest sub-separate programs, K through eight, and therefore, again, the most staff needed. So again, it's clear, it's really important to understand that. And we are, we actually started today, there's by contract and by will, I think of all of us, there's a safety committee that's already started between the union and the administration. We met today in my office, so we've started that. That was something that came up during our negotiations. So we're well underway with sharing ideas, understanding, you know, what the concerns are. Them, it was great for us to be able to share tonight what we're doing tonight, you know, for the people who didn't know this was happening, that adding staffing is going to help some of that de-escalation and the support that we're really trying to manage right now. So it's already happening, that we're talking about all schools. And there's teachers from every building and there's administrators from every building.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the one-to-one program assistant at the CGS.
Second.
Motion's from Member Shabilia, second's from Member DiZoglio. Discussion? If not, we will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve two program assistants for preschool and one full-time BCBA.
Second.
Motion's from Member Shabilia, second's from Member DiZoglio. Discussion? Member Shabilia?
This is, this is not a knock by any stretch, but we have two BCBAs posted and now we're adding another one.
Yep.
So I feel like we're fishing in the empty pond and that was what I was getting at earlier. I don't know what the right answer is and clearly neither does anybody else, but I just think it's worthy of saying that we already have two that we can't find and now we're adding another one. It's scary.
It is. I think, I, yes, I think we're hopeful with some word of mouth and networking that we're working on right now to, again, heavily recruit some folks.
Cup half-full.
What's that?
Your cup half-full.
My cup is half-full. But I think that we also have, you know, working with some of the agencies, there are people who just work a little bit with us that maybe we can actually up and them work with us full-time. There's, that's the other option for us too, hopefully. We're hopeful. We've got, we've got some options. You know, this is another one, that if the program at the preschool at Branch Street is almost identical, if not identical, they're just smaller, right? They're younger, less schooling than the program at the Marsh, right, as they grow. So, you know, we're looking at sort of similar conversations about exploring all options at both at this point. But I think if you see here, the description that Ms. Bozak wrote for the BCBA is, it is a little different. The title is different. We're going to post it differently, right? The title is early childhood support specialist, because it's not just, we want the BCBA, but we need a little something extra from that person. And we're hoping to get somebody who has some early childhood experience to be able to do that with us. Hope, glass half-full. We won't know until we try it, right? We think we know what we need, we got to try and get it, I think, at this point.
And I, can I just add? I think it's important for both this proposal and the one at the Marsh to keep in mind that this came from the staff. Like the staff getting their feedback, having them advocate, and really looking at what are the needs and what do we need in order to move things forward. And so it wasn't just me sitting there coming up, it was, it was, right? So that, like, especially that early childhood support specialist really came from the teacher saying, this is really what we need to meet the needs in this building right now.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have other business from the committee. I'll invite Member Maxwell to start the discussion regarding the open meeting law disclosure.
So I, it was brought to my attention that I hit a reply all to one of our emails. I immediately contacted the Attorney General's Office and the Secretary of State's office and with their guidance, it was just stated that as long as I put it out there publicly and discuss it at our next meeting, that it is okay. And also, there was really no violation because we weren't deliberating and there wasn't really a conversation, but I just wanted to disclose that for transparency, that I kind of reported myself, I put myself out there and I was told that if, as long as I disclosed it to the public, it was okay.
Thank you, Member Maxwell. And then we have also on the agenda, the request of Member Maxwell is discussion regarding clarification on communication.
Yeah, so for, just for, again, transparency, I was asked to come in for a meeting through the chair and the vice chair to ensure that communication between the committee and the superintendent remains effective and aligned with the policy. So for clarity, I'd like to reference the original email because the expectations outlined there are not aligned with the discussion that we had, but, or now. And I want to make sure that we're all on the same page going forward, so there's no misunderstanding. In the original email, it was that, you know, after consulting with legal counsel, we ask that you please copy both of us on all correspondence with the superintendent so that we're aware of your concerns and can determine whether, how to address them as a committee. We've also asked the superintendent to forward all emails from you to us unless we're already copied, which just, again, for transparency, I CC the mayor on all my emails to the superintendent. We have also asked the superintendent to not respond to individual communications only directed when, only when directed by the chair. And I am not allowed to meet with the superintendent unless one of us is present. I responded with, "All of my correspondence with the superintendent is conducted solely within the scope of my duties as an elected school committee member and as outlined by Massachusetts general law, the city charter, and relevant policies, BBA and BBAA. It's the responsibility of individual committee members to request information, raise concerns, and seek clarification on matters affecting student safety, instruction, and district operations." These are all core areas of the school committee oversight and communicating with the superintendent is a necessary part of me fulfilling these duties. I emphasize that any policy or protocol that prevents that or unduly delays communication regarding the district oversight would interfere with my legally mandated responsibilities as an elected official. So when we went to this meeting, we sat down and we discussed and, you know, Member Keegan and Superintendent Quong actually left the meeting, they were not present for this. But I've asked multiple times on how I've been without, you know, I have not acted within my purview and, you know, nobody has answers for that. Everything I do is within the purview of the school committee. And per our current policy, BBAA, it states that any school committee member may make a verbal or written request for information from the superintendent and the superintendent or designee shall have up to ten days to provide such information to the committee as a whole. So that's kind of where we stand now. We are following our policy and Massachusetts general law. So I will continue to communicate with the superintendent and, you know, hopefully that can be respected and any emails that I put out there will be addressed and answered. I did want to touch base, I know that one of the emails that kind of threw everybody over was the email to ask about the gender-neutral bathrooms and I'm not sure if Superintendent Quong can address that tonight. But I do have the numbers for the single-stall bathrooms and all-access for the students. And I did want to share those with the public because I know that the public is interested in knowing where those are and how many we have across the district. So if I could share that, that would be helpful to the public, I'm sure.
So that, I think that's fair simply because of the fact that we had our meeting on, I believe it was on Friday, and this was part of that discussion.
Mm-hmm.
So this was information that you had requested and provided today?
Yep. Okay, so at the, at the CGS, there are single-stall bathrooms and all students have access to them and one is in the nurse's office, unlocked and lockable when in use, and nine are in the kindergarten wing. At the Tenny, there's one in the health office, there's six in the kindergarten rooms, and there's two in the LS footsteps program, lower school footsteps program. The Timoney has one in the health office, two in the cafeteria, and ten in the kindergarten and grade-one classrooms on the ground floor. At the Marsh, there's ten kindergarten, one nurse. At the, at MHS, the exception, okay. The second floor has one all-access student bathroom, first floor has one all-access student bathroom, the nurse's office has one all-access student bathroom, and one lower-level student bathroom. The early education center has one ground floor unlocked, two first floor unlocked, and eight second floor unlocked. Students and families, it says that, I said, "Are students and families aware that they can request to use these single-stall private restrooms if they are uncomfortable? And can this be added to the handbook?" The response was, "Each situation is handled on a case-by-case basis and this is not currently in our handbook, but yes, we can add it." "How are we handling concerns about bathroom access? And once a student or parent communicates with the staff of the concern, they'll investigate and determine an appropriate response." If the, I know the principal had a specific student that was uncomfortable and she was told that to use a gender-neutral bathroom if she was uncomfortable with the current accommodation. Is that protocol, is that the protocol of someone that comes to admin with a concern? And it says, "The answer was, 'Once a student or parent communicates with the staff about the concern, they'll investigate, determine, and appropriate response. If a sole concern is discomfort, staff will share the option of an all-access bathroom and are reminded and offered that students can speak with counselors and administration at any time." The last question was kind of a personal question and there's a parent's name in that, so I'm not going to go that route, but I did just want to touch on that because I feel like, I bring it back to the October 14th meeting where I asked about the Timoney and I said, you know, there's one in the health office and two in the cafeteria. I said, you know, there's one in the health office and two in the cafeteria, but if, if I'm up here and the cafeteria bathroom is the only single-stall bathroom that I can use, it's going to take me 15, 20 minutes just to go to the bathroom, because I have to walk to the cafeteria, go to the bathroom, and then come back to my class. So I just want to be prepared and have everybody be prepared that there is not a gender-neutral bathroom on every floor at every school. There is not access during the day where everybody can just request it as needed, but it will be placed in the student handbook that, for anybody that has questions about that, when we reevaluate that. But, bring it back to the communications aspect, just, we're going to go forward, we're going to follow the law, we're going to follow policy, and I will continue to hopefully have professional communication with the superintendent and kind of get back to a place where we feel comfortable kind of communicating with each other and not having any issues with that.
Then next on the agenda, we have from Member Shibilia, a discussion regarding updates for the policy subcommittee.
So I'm not sure what updates we currently have. I know that we have our meeting scheduled for November 18th and again, on December 2nd at 5:00. I think the goal of those meetings is to get what has been a first read through its second read and move that along. Dr. Quong, keep me honest, but I don't think we have any more subcommittee meetings on the books right now.
We do not.
So, I mean...
That was the plan, what you just said.
Is there a way to add some?
A way to add some? I mean, yes, but it was my understanding is that...
The, the last subcommittee meeting that we had with Alicia, we talked at great length about like what our next step should be and this was the, what was the recommendation and that if, if the sections we have done, which are quite a few, come back for a first read and then a second read in December, we still have the largest section to review and that would be, we'd have to reestablish the subcommittee with the new school committee. There's just not, we just don't have enough weeks left for more meetings, for any special meetings to approve.
I just worry about that because during our meeting on Friday, we did discuss some options for some policies and they're not in the current proposed policies, so if we could meet again and kind of revisit some of the policies, that would be great.
Right, but this is the policy subcommittee for that project. I don't think we're going out and creating new policies, especially two years.
Well, they're not new policies, they're policies that we have brought forward to the committee and it's been approved. And during that meeting, we had discussed that maybe we shouldn't be approving certain policies and we should be adjusting them. So that's why I would just like to either have a meeting or kind of pause the process.
I guess my, my concern is that we've, I don't know how I can schedule Alicia for more. I think there's...
Just to add some clarity, so during our discussion on Friday with Attorney Macaro, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but there were some things that he had mentioned. Well, you know, if we have questions about various elements, say of communication and such, we can take a look at, you know, clarifying things by way of policies and that was a recommendation from Attorney Macaro just in passing, so that's where this is coming from.
Are these policies that have already gone through a first read?
Vice Chair?
Could we reach out to Attorney Macaro and ask him what his language he would recommend on those policies are to, so that we can have some legal guidance on it?
So specifically, they were referenced in this meeting on Friday with you two.
And so he was there, so he would know what he's talking about.
So with that, do we have any other business beyond that? Yep?
And I was also wondering if it was possible to change the December 2nd meeting because it does conflict with the book club at the library and I know that a lot of people were looking forward to reading the Diary of a...
The Part-Time Indian.
Part-Time Indian.
Absolute.
And so I would hate for people to have to decide between going to the book club and also watching our policy meetings, so if it's possible, I'm wondering if we could possibly change it.
Member Donovan wants to say?
Yeah, and I'd like to add to that, you folks will be receiving an invitation from the library for that day as well. I think it's at 5:30. Each year, the Board of Directors invites the city council for like, hear a little bit about the library, you know, talk a little bit about budget, you know, we will be having a new executive, new director of the library. And this year, the Board has, will be inviting the school committee as well. There will be cake, so I, I plan on going.
That's it. Where are you going?
So, no, I mean, I think that's another good reason to perhaps, yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to make a connection at the Nevins.
Does 12-3 or in 12 or 12-4? I just, for me, I think that's the only, I don't know how we go beyond that with all the other meetings scheduled before the holiday. I don't know.
Sure.
Sure, 12-3?
12-3 is a Wednesday, 12-4 is the Thursday, either at three, at 5 o'clock for either one. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't know what your schedule is because yours is always hard to pin down to.
Well, we can connect offline and...
12-3? 12-3?
3-4, all right, I'll put a little thing out for 3-4 and see if we can make sure we have a quorum for one of those two nights to move from the second and kid, and the studio staff. Okay.
Sounds good. Speaking of school committee invitations, I want to mention that tomorrow is the annual Veterans Day Parade, stepping off at 10:00 a.m. from the Legion on Broadway. Of course, all members of the school committee are invited to join us for that, along with the city council, of course. So let's see, one update I wanted to share, also we have the Santa Parade coming up. Ditto, if anyone wants to take part in that, more than welcome. Do we have any other updates or business?
Santa Parade, December 22nd.
Uh, November, November 22nd, yep.
November 22nd, yeah.
Yep, 1:00.
Yeah.
Member Donovan?
I just want to say, I attended and I don't know, you were there, Member Keegan, and you had gone previously to the roadshow put on by the high school staff and particularly the students. I went to the CGS and it was, you know, everyone should go, the entire city should go, because you get a sense of the good that is happening in our schools. The kids were amazing, the audience and the students who were presenting. I know there's going to be a roadshow for parents on December 15th, I want to say, and that's in the newsletters, and I hope everyone gets to go. And I very much appreciate the invitation. I think, I think it meant something to see some of us there. So I, and I hope I continue to get invitations.
Is it the same show that the parents get, that the kids got?
The kids will present at night.
It was awesome.
I mean, it's tweaked a little bit.
Yeah.
But the kids will present at night.
It was fantastic and, I mean, just thinking back to what I had in high school and it's worlds apart. And the kids were all so animated and excited, had so much to share and give and the seventh and eighth graders at the Marsh, the one I was at, they, they loved it.
Thank you. So with that, at the beginning of the meeting, before we went on, Member Willett threw out a bet, not really a bet, but the idea that we would adjourn at 8:10 p.m. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:10 p.m.
So moved.
So moved.
All right. Motion is from Member, the Vice Chair, second's from Member DeZoglio. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion was from the Vice Chair, the second's from Member DeZoglio. We had a unanimous vote and our meeting is adjourned.
Good night, McThorne.